Oh, hey Lori. We need to update our website for the, our website for the new shops that there's been changes to people. We have a listing of all the shop owners and that hasn't been updated.
Okay.
Okay. Carol says that's under your, under your chart.
I think she meant maybe her secretary Lori Stacey.
Er.
Lori.
Oh.
Yeah.
Lori Stanley. Well, I thought she meant Lori Stacey. Were you thinking, okay, okay.
But I'm happy to help with what it is.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I've misunderstood that, okay. Yeah, Lori Stanley, I mean, I'm gonna get five emails a day. You know, it's on all different.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you. Uh, this is a history class, I guess they're getting extra credit.
I, I have, was not planning to, I mean, someone needs to, but you guys wanna do that?
Yeah, one of us.
Yeah, maybe we'll make Chris do it. Fifteenth. Are you all ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Lights on.
You guys are ready? All right, lights are on. I'd like to call the Monday, October 2nd, 2017 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting, I was wondering if you would join us in bowing your heads for a moment of silence for the victims of the mass shooting in Las Vegas. Thank you. Uh, Lori, may we have a roll call?
Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Hilton.
Here.
Mr. Epley.
Here.
And, uh, do we have a report on the minutes of our September 18 regular and work session? Mrs. Hilton?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, I've reviewed the minutes from both of those meetings and I've found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. Uh, we have no status reports this evening, uh, but we do have, uh, a lot of visitors and I, we have two really special ones, but I'm not certain if we're gonna make every one of the students speak, but we may, we may decide to do that. But, uh, but first of all, uh, I'd like to introduce Dr. Sally Wilson, uh, who wants, who also serves on our Oakwood Board of Health and, uh, and her husband serves on our Budget Review Committee. And, uh, I went to high school with him. And, uh, she wants to talk about the Out of the Darkness Community Walk. Sally, would you like to join it and to talk to the podium so the folks at home can hear you?
Thank you so much for inviting me to come speak tonight, and I want to tell you a little bit about our fourth annual Out of the Darkness Walk that's at Oakwood High School on Sunday, October 22nd at 2:00 PM. The city of Oakwood and the Oakwood schools have partnered with us for the last several years, and we appreciate so much all the cooperation that we've gotten from both of you. Uh, this walk is sponsored by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, which is the largest private funder of suicide prevention research in the country. And their goal is to reduce suicide 20% by the year 2025. And this is quite a daunting goal because suicide rates have increased more than 24% over the last 15 years, and they've increased across all demographics. So, it, this is really a, a big problem we're all dealing with. Uh, in the last three years, we've raised over $120,000 and we've gone from 300 to 600 to 900 walkers last year, and we're on pace to probably be around 900 to 1,000 this year. Uh, the walk is free, we encourage fundraising, that's how they raise their money, and this is one of over 400 walks across the country being held this time of year to raise money for suicide prevention. And, uh, we do request that people register for the walk for liability purposes, for photography and pictures and things like that, so. Um, if anyone wants any more information, they can go to www.afsp.org. And I brought some flyers tonight, I can also share some of those electronically if anyone wants any of those, or if there's an interest in any yard signs or anything.
I have seen some yard signs.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions for, for Sally? Well, thank you very much for that report and, uh,
Thank you.
Please, please support this, this is a, this is a very worthwhile cause you're supporting.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And next, we have Oakwood resident extraordinaire Madeline Isley, who's here to talk about Citizens for Sinclair Community College, welcome Madeline.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Members of the Council, and thank you, Dr. Wilson, for your leadership in this important cause. You know, it's that kinda stuff that makes this such a great community. So, thank you for your leadership in, in perpetuating that community spirit and, uh, that coming together, um, that is so important. One of the things that this community really stands for is education, and that's evidenced by all the students who are in the room here, uh, and also by the fact that this community has long been a very strong supporter of Sinclair and the Sinclair levy. I'm here today to ask you for your support for Issue Four, which is the levy that, uh, the community has supported for Sinclair since 1966. This time around, it is a straight renewal levy, so without raising your taxes, it will continue to keep Sinclair strong. You know, it's because of that community spirit and that, that, that commitment to education and that rallying around important causes that Sinclair has been able to become a national leader in, uh, education and training. It's because of that rallying around that Sinclair has, uh, opened up a 30, almost $32 million Syphilin Health Sciences Center, um, truly, if, if it wasn't for taxpayer support, we wouldn't be able to provide the educated and trained professionals that are needed for this region's biggest industry, which is healthcare. And that's just one example. So, thank you for your continued support, we're counting on Oakwood again. Uh, show up on November 7th or vote early, starting on October 11th, and vote for Issue Four. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I know Sinclair has been a leader in allowing high school students to get college credits, and also, they've been able to, uh, work out agreements, I know with Wright State University and I think recently University of Dayton.
That's correct.
And, and it's a great way for, especially, you know, kids in, in our community, you can save a heck of a lot of your parents' money by getting some college credit while you're still in high school, and, uh, and the, and the, we've hired degreed people from Sinclair at my CPA firm and have had very good experience with, with that. So, we appreciate you doing that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Trying to keep the cost of college down as well.
That's right, well, and because of taxpayer support, Sinclair offers the lowest tuition in the entire state of Ohio for any two or four-year public college.
Did you hear that, ladies? The lowest?
The lowest tuition.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Now, do we have any other visitors that weren't on our agenda that wish to address council? This would be your time to come down to the microphone and please identify yourself for the record and welcome.
Hello, um, my name is Serena Kelly, I live at 420 Kramer Road, and I just have to comment really quickly that I recently, as an adult learner, started going back to school. And, uh, I tried out UD, which is an incredible university, but to cut costs, I will be attending Sinclair in the spring, so that is incredible that, uh, we have you coming to speak today, so thank you. Um, I wanted to speak with you guys today about an issue that's very near and dear to my heart. I moved to Oakwood about two years ago, uh, I've never stepped foot in Ohio, and I stumbled upon Oakwood by just driving around for a few hours. And I am so fortunate that that happened because I have the opportunity to live in this incredible community. Um, and I know that we don't have a lot to complain about here in Oakwood, uh, but I do feel that there is an issue that I would like to bring to your attention so that we can address it. And I live on Kramer Road, it accesses the DCC, the Dayton Country Club. There's two accesses to the Dayton Country Club from, um, both from Oakwood, West Thruston and then Kramer Road. Excuse me, I have allergies. And I've noticed, uh, recently, um, there's been a lot of speeding, and it started when I first moved into the area. And it was directly from, you know, the Dayton Country Club to the stop sign, and cars would be going up to, you know, 40, 45 miles per hour. So, I immediately spoke with Oakwood Police Department, and I've been in contact with Captain Jones, who, I have to say, our police department are incredible, they have offered so much support and guidance, they have done everything that they can to try to decrease the speeding on our street as well as other streets in the neighborhood. Um, but the issue continued to become a problem, as I noticed, it just didn't, didn't help. As much as the police came out, there was still speeding. You can't cap, uh, capture every single license plate, you can't catch every single driver. And so, I decided to start taking more initiative, um, in action. I contacted the city of Oakwood to ask if I could speak tonight, and they said, yes, come and, and bring this to your attention. I started a petition in my neighborhood, and I started talking to my neighbors, and I realized that the, the issue is not just isolated to Kramer Road, it's all throughout Oakwood. Uh, and so, there's a community effort, and there's some lovely women that are here to also speak tonight, possibly, um, to share their concerns about this being in Oakwood. Now, ultimately, if I could choose, I would have horse and buggies for everybody, and we wouldn't have to worry about car speeding. I'm old-fashioned, but, uh, that's not, that's not gonna happen. And although I am very vigilant to make sure that I do not speed in Oakwood, maybe sometimes I'll go a couple miles over on the freeway, 'cause that's the norm, but in Oakwood, I'm very careful to be aware of the pedestrians. We are a walking city, our kids walk to school, we walk everywhere, as you guys all know, and, you know, love about Oakwood. Um, and so, the issue arises that the speeding wasn't, uh, stopping, and I got the petition signed, and I continued to, you know, reach out to my community members. I, of course, we got on Facebook, and you guys know the Moms Group that is shunned over here, but there was a lot of discussion about speeding, uh, and particularly any roads that had a lot of through traffic. And so, I'm looking at, you know, Kramer Road, West Thruston, um, they all lead to the Business Dayton Country Club. Also, Oakwood Avenue is a direct route from Far Hills down to the, uh, University of Dayton area, and then Schreuer Road, Schaefer Road, you guys know there's traffic, um, problems on Schreuer that have been addressed by the construction project. So, this isn't something that, um, I would like to be dismissed, I would like for there to be an answer, uh, some kind of conclusion of how can we address this issue? And ultimately, I feel for my own street, that a stop sign halfway through, there's four, three, uh, crossroads on Kramer, Northview, Haver, and Southview, and then you get to the Dayton Country Club. And I am petitioning the city, uh, if you guys would consider putting a stop sign on the corner of Kramer and Haver. And I would like to leave, um, with one note, there was a comment by the couple that just bought the house that's on the corner of Haver and Kramer. And the gentleman, um, he, what he said in his comments on the petition, he said, "I am often in my yard telling drivers to slow down, I hope it doesn't take one of our kids getting hit to get this done." And I think that hits really close to a lot of our hearts, because my daughter is consistently playing out there, and she could get hit, and I really hope it doesn't come to that. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate your support and coming out here and your, uh, due diligence to the community, and I, I hope to discuss this further with you.
Okay, well, thank you Serena for your comments.
Thank you, I also have a couple letters, but I'll give them to you afterwards, so I don't take up the time.
That would be fine. I know that, um, have we, have we reached out, or do you know, have we reached out to the Dayton Country Club management, uh, asking them to be aware of this situation? Maybe putting something in their newsletters or their email correspondence to their members?
I know that Captain Jones has reached out, uh, on more than one occasion, it's probably been about a year since he's been back in contact with us, but I know he has done.
Okay.
If I could quickly comment, I've been in contact with Dan Gates, the general manager of the Dayton Country Club, quite frequently. Unfortunately, I had to call the other day for a speeding driver that was a staff member, and the Oakwood Police Department was, oh, I mean, they're amazing, they come to your door, they just, they, I can't ask for more from them, they've done everything that they can. And it's on us as citizens to stop speeding, but unfortunately, it's not stopping, people are not being responsible. But he did recommend that he would put it in the newsletter and he would speak to his staff, so that has happened.
All right, well, it can't hurt, I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think it would hurt. Do you wanna talk about how you normally do enforcement at various hotspots in the city?
I can only address, uh, part of what, uh, was brought here tonight. I will tell you that, uh, as a general rule for traffic engineering and for public safety, uh, specifically within, uh, the manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, it very, it's very specific, it says that stop signs are not a generally permitted effective or permitted use for speed control, uh, that there's studies that say that they can actually have, uh, the opposite effect, uh, when they're placed in residential neighborhoods, uh, and people will, uh, tend to speed up after a stop sign and can actually, it's a, a study by the, uh, by a man named Bobine, who says that, uh, median speeds in residential neighborhoods, mid-block, actually have a tendency to increase, uh, and it also increases other certain types of accidents. So, as, as a speed control device, stop signs are not generally recommended, uh, in, uh, in residential neighborhoods. As far as, uh, how the safety department handles those things, uh, we, we go and send that to, uh, Operations Captain, who's currently Mike Jones right now, we make those site enforcements, and we assign officers on particular times of day when we have, uh, you know, we try and keep track of when people say it's the, the, the most frequent time of a violation, a particular thing going on, and we try and assign an officer out there, uh, to monitor those, you know, we, uh, we'll do that for a period of time, for two or three weeks. What the problem usually happens is, an officer will stay out there for a few weeks, people realize, hey, at 2:30, the officer's usually sitting on, around this area, so I need to slow down, and obviously, the traffic slows down, tapers off, not as much activity for the officers, we have other complaints we need to move on to, other things that, other neighborhoods with this speeding complaints, traffic complaints, sign complaints. Then, of course, the police will leave, and within a few months, we're back doing it again. So, that's, that's how we've, we've handled those, that's, uh, pretty much the most effective way, uh, in, engineering-wise and, and safety-wise, not just for Oakwood, but for handling type of speed complaints unless you're gonna do a, such as on Schreuer, where you do a complete redesign of a roadway and, and spend, you know, millions of dollars to do that, and, and you'll see that, uh, using Schreuer as an example, uh, you know, we wanted to, one of the objectives was to control speeds and reduce speeds there, but we didn't put in traffic signals, we didn't put in stop signs, we changed the roadway engineering and roadway design, so, uh, you know, that's, that's, uh, where I would go with that, I would say that we will diligently do what we can do, uh, to be as effective as possible in, in those areas where we have specific complaints, and, and we do try and work on them as much as we can.
Do you, do you think, do you, do you have a perception that there might be less enforcement on those two particular streets that she talked about because we've increased enforcement on Schreuer, Acorn, and Hathaway due to this construction project, or, or not?
I would say as a total amount of time, uh, devoted in, in the city right now, obviously, on the east side, on Acorn, on Hathaway, we, we do have officers that are spending a significant amount of time there, especially when, you know, in the past couple weeks where we had the detour in place and people on Acorn where that's not usually a, a road that sees anywhere near as much traffic, and, uh, you know, and I, and I think that we'll probably be back to, uh, more of a, I don't wanna say normal, but more of our pattern of not devoting someone to a specific area for that extended period of time when that, when that project, uh, comes to an end here in the next month or so.
Mm-hmm. I mean, and I, just speaking for myself, 'cause I have no direct knowledge of this, but it would seem to me that in the early morning, in the evening, and right around noon time would be when I would expect more speeders on Kramer going to an event at, a luncheon at, at Dayton Country Club, or, you know, going for a golf outing, an afternoon golf outing, but I, I don't know if you have any statistics on that.
I don't have the statistics, but I would tend to assume that that's probably pretty accurate.
All right. Any other questions for the chief?
Yeah, um, I know that, like, on Schreuer, we did traffic studies, I mean, is this something we can do, a study, putting, you know, the, the strips down and figuring out what average speed is, and?
We can, we can put, uh, I can make arrangements to have that done if that's something that you desire, we can.
'Cause I know sometimes, you know, I, I know that on a residential street, somebody doing 25 miles an hour might look like they're doing 35 just because of the scale and everything else.
And I, and I'm not discounting what's been said, I, I, I do believe, I mean, when we've sent people over there, we've had people that have been violators and have been speeding, I mean, that's, you know, I don't doubt that.
I live right around the corner, I know for a fact that when I go to Rotary meetings, there's people going very fast, but, um, the other question I had was, are the, are there the options for doing temporary stop signs and to see whether, you know, if we start doing studies as to, we find out the average speed is 35 through the 25, we throw up a temporary stop sign for a two-month period and do the same thing? Is that?
I'd have to get more into the traffic warrants and research, I know that temporary stop signs except in, I don't wanna say emergency situations, but where the traffic signals are out or signs are down are not generally a recommended, uh, use of a sign.
Nothing, yeah, nothing, I'm sorry, nothing like having people say, if you, if you're on Kramer going to Dayton Country Club and you're speeding, you're gonna get a ticket.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and then the other thought was, I mean, do you have any statistics on speed bumps? You know, other traffic, um, speed issues, you know, throwing a speed bump up, is that something that generally slows people down?
Speed bumps, uh, engineering-wise have a couple of different issues with them, one is, it's similar to a stop sign, they're, people, people, slow down for the speed bump, they speed up in between, uh, but secondarily, we live, uh, in an area that sees snow, sees ice, uh, they can really, I mean, they can do a number on snow removal equipment, uh, things that, you know, when you're in an area, you know, down south that you don't get six inches of snow, but I mean, they can do significant damage to plows, to, they're hard to work around for those people as well, the public works guys.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments for the chief? Okay, I, I know that what I had heard anecdotally is, if you wanna slow down speeding, create a bunch of potholes on Kramer, and people, people will not speed. Now, we're known, we're known for our outstanding streets and we keep, we make them smooth, you know, and, and I'm not proposing that we put potholes on Kramer, just for the record, but, uh, all right, well, thank you, Alex, for your report. Is there anyone else in your group? Yeah, please come up and state your name for the record as well, thank you, welcome.
Hi, my name's Natalie Brian, I live at the corner.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Natalie Brian, sorry, kids, they share a lot.
Get the same thing, huh?
Um, I, I live at the corner of Delane and Acorn, so I can attest to increased police presence. I cannot definitively say, now, I am a working mom, so I'm gone all throughout the day. Um, I do notice increased traffic, but I have not noticed an increase or a decrease in, uh, there has been some police presence, but it, I don't know that it's deterred the speeding. Um, I agree that we do not know, based on visually detecting speed, it's not an option. I'd be curious to know how dated those studies are that you reckon, you know, that you reference. I'd also be interested to know your recommendation. All I heard tonight was a bunch of naysaying about why stop signs don't work and why that is not a good source, but what I'd like is a recommendation, because although not a very active member of the Moms Group, I could assume that there are plenty of moms here. And we've chosen Oakwood to be our community. Um, I, I didn't plan to have children, but now I have them, so if I had planned to have children, maybe I would've lived on a different block that had a sidewalk, where my children could actually be protected. But, it, people fly on Delane, they're, it's a running club, you see runners all up and down, people are running and walking children, I mean, it must be the Oakwood High School, they're running through my yard because there's no sidewalk and because the street is, I mean, I have to park on the street, I have more than two vehicles, so one's on the street. And, so the kids are smart because they're running in the yard, which is much safer than them running in the street. And with this project, I mean, we have city buses going down our street, we have equipment, I can only imagine what that's gonna do to the road, maybe we will have the potholes in the end, um, but it's frustrating, it's very frustrating. Uh, so, I don't, I don't know how things work in city council, I don't know how you lobby to get, um, sidewalks, I would, you know, do what's necessary on my part as a homeowner, if that's gonna help and if that's gonna keep our children safe. Um, but I, I would like to know how dated your study is on this, the stop signs, because I work with a lot of engineers on a lot of days, and they like to engineer a lot of things, and they wanna get it perfect. But as a program manager, I look at the bigger picture. Let's, let's step back and let's say what is good for all of us and what's realistic, and, and maybe a temporary stop sign, and we conduct our own study that is more relative and recent.
All right, well, thank you for your comments.
Yeah, and I would just, I'd just say, I, I hope that we haven't got, given the sense that we're naysaying anything at this point. I mean, really what we're trying to do is hear what, what folks have to say, hear from professionals who deal with this on a daily basis, and then just sort of, you know, take it all in, see what we can do in terms of studying this issue. So, i- if we gave that sense, I, I apologize, that's not our, that's not our take at all. Um, we really just are interested in finding out what people have to say, as well as what suggestions you have, we'll look into them, we'll see what, uh, we're able to do. Other, other folks?
Okay. Come on, come on down, we've got time for everybody.
Yep. Hi, good evening, uh, my name's Abby Urbis, I live at 406 Green Mountain Boulevard, so I'm on the other side of Oakwood from Serena, and, um, I see a lot of similar traffic behavior, as I walk my daughter to school every day, and I walk her home two days a week, I, I work out of the home three days a week. But, um, my, I have a specific concern, um, I see a lot of children funnel down Delane and Hathaway to those streets that Sandwich Smith School, which, uh, Telford and Aberdeen, I believe. And, um, there, there's a lot of cross-traffic on the north-south streets, and children are crossing those two main streets to get to school where there's been a crosswalk, so I'm recommending putting a stop sign on those north-south streets just to give those children the opportunity to cross the street safely, to then get to the crosswalk, to get to school. Um, I often have to wait several minutes for a, a long line of cars to pass rather quickly, and people park pretty close to the corner, so in order to see around, like, I'm training my daughter how to inch and like, look out around the car, and then somebody comes flying around, and she's only in second grade now, so I still walk with her, but at this point, it's gonna be a long time until I let her walk to school by herself because it just doesn't feel safe. So, that, those are just two specific locations that I could recommend to use for a stop sign.
Tell me those, tell me that intersection again.
So, it's Hathaway and Delane are the north-south streets, and then it's on either side of Smith School, it's, um, Telford and Aberdeen.
Telford and Aberdeen, oh, all right.
Yeah, there's, I, I see the kids come from all of the blocks.
Because we have, we actually have traffic signals at Schaefer and Aberdeen.
Yeah, yeah, they come from, on either side of the school and funnel up to cross at the crosswalk, but there's no other place for them to safely cross.
All right, we'll take a look at that, thank you. Uh, who else would like to come speak? Please state your name for the record and welcome. State your name for, and address for the record, I know who you are, but you have to do that anyway.
So, my name is Mary Kidwell, I live on Hathaway, at the corner of Hathaway and Beverly, some of you may know my dad, Chaz Kidwell. So, I think the issue is more than just speeding in Oakwood, because I've seen many distracted drivers, kind of, as a point. I run cross-country, so I run during the summer, and I'll be running around a corner and I'll peop, see people who are, just ignore the stop sign, they'll just, they won't look right, they'll look left, like, I was running one day, and I was coming down Hathaway, and a driver went to the corner of the stop sign, they barely stopped, and then they turned right as I was coming at them, and they basically almost hit me, they slammed on the brakes and they just looked in fright. On an unusual day, uh, my team will go out and will run around Oakwood, and a lot of the time, there will be people who are speeding, and the problem is parked cars, but I think it's also people who are trying to text, they're distracted by their kids in the backseat, they're just, I know students at Oakwood High School who will just, I'll be walking home and they'll speed right up spiree after the stop sign, as he was saying, and then they'll slow right down for the next one. I grew up without a sidewalk, as, you know, so I think it's not only like we need sidewalks, I think it's also that parents need to kinda teach their kids that you can't go out into the street, I know kids are kids, they'll do whatever, but my parents were like, you can't go out in the street, you have to stay in their yard, and for some people, I realize they don't have the yards, but I think it's also making the most of what you have, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is sort of near and dear to my heart, because my, my wife, who's now retired, uh, drove one of the Suburbans for about 15 years, and she would come home spitting nails just about every day, talking about how terrible the Oakwood drivers are, especially when it's raining and around Harmon School, but I'm familiar with that issue. Uh, please, welcome, if you can. Uh, please welcome, if you can, state your name for the record as well.
James Jackson. I live on eleven-twenty Delane. I live right next to Mrs. Bryan. Uh, and we sit out front and we talk to each other. Our kids play out front, like many of the houses in Oakwood. We don't have a yard, our backyard, everyone's in front. And so we have, between us and the house between, in front of us, we have six children under the age of eight. Of course, they're all active. Now, our block is, is one of the few blocks that neither has a stop sign around it or a sidewalk adjoining it. So there's no sidewalks from, I believe, Delwood down to where, uh, Delane meets Acorn. So there's no sidewalks there for the children, but it is often a throughway for people coming south off of Schroyer. They make that turn and they come down through Delwood to get into Oakwood. And now I don't have a speedometer in my head, but I can tell from my neighbors who know me that are doing twenty, twenty-five miles an hour when they know I'm outside with my kids, to those who don't and are doing well above that. Um, and it is more frequent now, obviously, because of the point that if you do twenty-five or above or do above twenty-five on Schroyer, you get a double fine. There's no double fines on our street, on Acorn or Delwood or Hathaway. There's no double fines there. So that's a little bit of more incentive, maybe, to push the speed limit for them. Um, so I've been talking to my neighbors for a long time. I mean, we have children. You know, I know people like to speed up and get to a stop sign sometimes, but I have six children, may, or there's six small children there and it'd just be nice for them to second guess that. You know, we, as parents, we usually stand on this, on the road between the kids and everything. And my wife almost got hit the other day. She's getting out of her car. She literally has to, had to close her car, sit up against the car and a car, like, literally almost hit her feet. I mean, no slowing down, you know, cars are parked on that road also. And it's just, it's kind of gotten a little bit hairy. Um, especially, but even more so than the, once this goes away, our problem really still persists of not having a sidewalk or a stop sign. There's no stop sign all the way down to Peach, or Orchardly, Orchardly Park. I mean, there's nothing. So it's a great road for them to go down. So just wanted to bring that up.
All right, thank you for your comments. Who else would like to address council? Please come on. I know who you are. Okay, okay. Can you state your name for the record and welcome?
My name is Sarah Dotsey. I live at thirteen oh five Hathaway. Wasn't prepared to speak this evening. Um, but I, like everyone else here, I'm here for the same reason. There is too much speeding in Oakwood. And I do think it was happening before the Schroyer construction. It's definitely increased it because of that. Um, but outside of the construction, I've always seen speeding. I haven't lived here for very long, a little bit over a year, but I live, um, on the corner of Hathaway and Delwood. So Hathaway is that north-southbound street with no stop signs. The only stop sign on that street is Patterson and Peach Orchard and then all the way out to Dorothy Lane. And there's nothing to slow anybody down there. Um, like someone else said, we're a walking community. Everyone's walking. Some of the streets we end up on don't have sidewalks, so for a short time we are in the street. People are going over to see their neighbors, all sorts of things, and we shouldn't have to worry about, you know, people going more than twenty-five miles an hour. A lot of it also is distracted driving. Someone else brought up how people roll through stop signs, not looking. It actually just happened to me at a very good intersection where there are stop signs, um, Schaefer and Delwood. It's a four-way intersection there. I was right in the middle of the street, walking through, and I looked up and I saw a car coming to the stop sign and I could see him not stopping and not looking at me. So I stopped, even though I was the pedestrian already in the middle of the street, and he rolled on by. At this point, I looked up and I saw a police officer down the street of Delwood who did nothing. And I'll give them the fact, because of the angle, maybe he didn't see anything. I really don't know. But that moment really upset me to see that people rolling through stop signs are getting away with it. And that is something I have, uh, left a voicemail, at least with Captain Jones. He called me back. We were playing phone tag today. But, um, so, yeah, it's just something that I want addressed. Um, I don't know if stop signs are the issue or, sorry, not the issue, but the solution, but, um, I, I want to be able to work together on this. This isn't something that's gonna go away. So I would like to collectively find a solution to this.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Someone else stood up? Yes, please state your name for the record. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Cara Kite. I live at three-three-eight Volusia Avenue. Um, so I have two kids, first grade and third grade at Harmon. And, uh, I'm a working ma- mom and South Connection was killing me, so I had to make a change this year. And, um, I can't let them walk from Volusia. I mean, it's just, it's a death trap, I think, walking from Volusia to Harmon for a first and third grader. There's, there's no way they'd get there with all the traffic. So my solution is, my mother lives at three-fourteen Beverly. Um, so kids, drop the kids off at my mom's in the morning, you know, no sidewalks on Beverly. They, I still don't trust them to get to school from Beverly by themselves, but my friend Ellen Mays lives at nine-two-six Acorn. She grew up in Oakwood. I'm sure you probably know her. And, uh, we do a lot with the kids in terms of, you know, kid sharing and helping each other out. So, um, she picks my kids up in the morning for school. And as, as kind of a trade, it's not really an even trade, but I take her son to soccer a couple nights. So a couple weeks ago, I parked my car, she lives on Acorn, and I parked my car at the corner of Beverly and Acorn to cross. I was facing northbound, or I was facing southbound and I went to cross the street to go to her house to get her son. I, I couldn't turn left into her driveway because the traffic was just insane. Um, so when Jonah and I came out, he's eight, um, you know, we stopped to make sure that no cars were coming and it seems to be like bumper to bumper and then it slows down and then it's just steady stream of people. And, and there is a cop car decoy further down, but I don't think there's anybody in it. I, I don't know for sure. That's what, that's what I've heard. So, um, we looked both ways and, and there was a break in traffic, so we went to cross and we almost got hit, actually, because all of a sudden people just started speeding up and, you know, we almost got hit by a car trying to open the car to get him in the car. Um, so, you know, I was telling my mom about it and in the morning, my kids wait on the boulevard because Ellen comes from Acorn. She goes down and my mom lives on the south side of the street. So she walks the kids out to the boulevard and they're supposed to, you know, stand in the boulevard. And my mom's like, the kids are gonna get hit in the boulevard. You can't have them stand in the boulevard. She needs to turn her, her car around. And I'm like, she works full-time. She has three kids. She doesn't have time to turn the car around. Just let them stand in the boulevard, right? They'll be fine. So last weekend, I didn't have water, couldn't take it anymore. Went over to my mom's house. I thought, I'm gonna sleep at my mom's house. I can't stand this no-water situation. So I go over to my mom's and my mom's like, did you see there was just an accident? Somebody on Hathaway thought the people, or somebody on Beverly thought the people on Hathaway were gonna stop. The people on Hathaway drove up into the median. See what I mean? These people and your kids are gonna get hap- hit by a median, or they're gonna get hit standing on the median. So, you know, at first, when she was worried about them standing in the median because she thought a car was gonna hit them, I thought, you know, no, that sounds crazy. Nobody's gonna hit them in the grassy median. But now the more that I think about it, I mean, maybe that is a possibility and, and there aren't any sidewalks. I mean, I have another friend that lives on Greenmount. I don't know how their address is Greenmount, the Hagers. They're, they're on Delane, but their address is on Greenmount and their driveway is like this. So their kids play basketball and the ball rolls in the street. And then you shoot the basketball again and it rolls in the street and there's no stop signs anywhere on Delane. I mean, there's like two stop signs. So I was here a year ago and I do support the Schroyer Road Project and I do think it's the right thing to do. And I took a lot of flack for that, especially living on Volusia because nobody knew why I cared about it. But I think it's important and I think it's increasing the safety and walkability of our community and our kids that live on the other side. But a year ago, people sat in this room and told you that Delane and Acorn, or Delane and, and Acorn and Hathaway were gonna be a problem. You know, people said, they speed down those roads now and once that becomes a construction zone, it's gonna get worse. And I'm here to tell you that it's, it's getting worse. I mean, I've witnessed it twice in the last maybe three weeks. So I just think something has to change. I'm not a proponent of speed bumps. Um, I don't think they're good for our tax dollars. I don't think they're good for snow removal, but I think something has to change. I don't know if it's stop signs or more ticketing, but I, I mean, someone's gonna get hurt. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address council?
Yep.
Come on down. State your name for the record. Welcome.
Um, Michaela Kendig. I live at, I live on Hadley. Um, so just another thing about speeding. Um, the parked cars, because Oakwood streets are so narrow, the parked cars in the streets, um, you have to slow down when you're going past because there's two cars parked on either side of you. You have to slow down when you're driving through. So those really help. But on streets that don't have sidewalks, people have to walk in the streets. And when there's parked cars there, it's really hard for them to try to get into the grass when there's a car coming. And I know that a lot of people complain about people being in the road when they're driving. Um, and people have children and dogs who are running and riding their streets, or running and riding their bikes in the street, um, and that kind of thing. And it's dangerous when there are no sidewalks and the parked cars on either side. But the, um, the parked cars really do help slow cars down. And, um, as you, um, said earlier, stop signs and speed bumps, people will sometimes just speed up after they hit the stop signs and the speed bumps. So the narrow roads in Oakwood are actually, um, kind of a benefit, but when there's no sidewalks, they're kind of, it kind of is a problem. So.
All right, thank you. I know several people have talked about not having sidewalks on certain streets in Oakwood and the pol- the procedure for that, if you want to have the city install sidewalks, you normally need to get a petition from substantial number of neighbors. I don't know if it's a hundred percent, uh, Rob, but it's, if the neighbors all signed a petition agreeing to have the city put sidewalks in, that's normally then added as an assessment on your real estate property tax bill, uh, over sometimes a fifteen, twenty-year period. But I don't know how you get to the petition process. Just because one person on, on Beverly wants a sidewalk, we're, we're not gonna put a sidewalk in just for one person.
True. Well, there's, there's a couple of different procedures for the sidewalk assessments under state law. There's one where, uh, where council, if, if council just thinks, you know, this particular street needs sidewalks, you can pass a resolution of necessity and you can put sidewalks in with the cost to be assessed, uh, to the homeowners there. And that's without a petition at all.
All right.
And so there's a, there's a legal mechanism where council could decide that and, and impose that. But then, like you said, it's gonna be assessed to the homeowners who have frontage along that street. And I don't, I don't know what the repayment period is for that particular kind of assessment. But there is, there's a process to do that. The other kind of assessment is the petition type that you're talking about. And in some circumstances, it requires sixty percent of the, of the frontage owners along the street to sign off that petition. In some other circumstances, it can require up to seventy-five percent. Um, and there's statutory processes for how you deal with, uh, you know, let's say you got nine houses on the block and eight of them want the sidewalk and one says, hell no. There's a, there's a process to address that. But there's, you know, that petition can then lead to a city-initiated improvement with the cost being assessed.
All right.
It, it's all spelled out by statutory mechanisms and if there are, if there are residents who are interested in pursuing that, I can point them in the right direction so that they could start that process.
I think that'd be helpful. Okay. Who else wishes to address council? Please come up and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Sarah Wector and I live on.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
My name is Sarah Wector and I live on two-thirty-one Northview Road. Um, and I could pretty much echo what a lot of people are saying here about, um, the driving and similar things with the sidewalks. Um, my kids are, we walk our kids to school and we're running into streets that don't have sidewalks. We're running into having to look around cars and cars are driving on the street, but there's no sidewalk to go. Um, so it sounds, um, it sounds to me like, I was here a year ago about Schroyer Road and it sounds like we really need to assess a lot of these other streets that we're on. We're seeing a lot of other issues here. Um, and I also wanted to comment on, um, the, the Kramer Road and the idea that, of putting a, a stop sign in might not be the best idea for the traffic, the stop-and-go traffic. Um, but with this being a walking community, there's really no safe area for a kid to cross the street on Kramer. That whole street doesn't have any, any stop signs at all for them to really cross the street. So I'm just asking that you guys look over that and see if there is another option. If the stop sign isn't an option for it, there's another option. Um, and that's really all. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come on down here? We've, you've stood up and three, four times. Yes, please, uh, state your name for the record and welcome.
My name's Sharon Edwards. I'm at three-forty-four Spiree. And, um, I.
You were here a couple of meetings ago.
A couple, yeah, that's right. And, um, so the statutory, where would we find that? Is that in the city's code or?
No, that's, that's state law.
State law? So we don't have our own rules for it or how?
There's not a local, Oakwood-only procedure for that. It's a state law procedure. It's in the seven twenties of the Ohio Revised Code. If you, I can get you the specific reference, if you'd like that.
Did, I, I couldn't completely hear in the back, but did you say that you guys could decide that the, the city needs that?
Council has the ability, if they, if they adopt what's called a resolution of necessity where they've decided that a particular area of the city needs sidewalks, they can initiate that process.
Okay. So here's my next question. So if my neighbors who don't have sidewalks petition and they say, I want a sidewalk, do I, how does that assessment work? Is it like it's one time on their taxes or would it be over several, several years? How, how does that go? You know, like, if I need repairs to my sidewalk, I get notified and then it goes on my taxes. I can either pay it upfront or how does that work? How would that work?
Normally, an assessment is, is you pay that over a period of time, five, ten, fifteen years. It just depends on, on, uh.
So how would that get decided? Would you guys decide that or would they be able to decide? I guess I'm, you know, if I'm gonna give information to neighbors and say, hey, we're talking about possibly petition and you guys are gonna be paying for it, how would that affect them? That's why I want to be able to articulate to them.
Okay, I, I don't know the answer to that.
I would, I would say that as we sit here tonight, I don't know the answer off the top of my head because it's been eons since I had to deal with a sidewalk assessment situation. But I'd be happy to look that up and, and get you those answers, especially if you're gonna, are you, you're planning to assemble a group of people?
No, I'm not. My kids are like out of here. I just wanna, I'm trying to support my neighbors because I, mine got to live with sidewalks, so. And, you know. So I guess another question I have is like, have we been having more tickets written from speeding? Like statistically, can?
Yeah, please address that.
Well, one other thing, if it, in that way, we can just do a one fail stop. Is the other idea I had is, uh, as a solution possibly is what about like radar or, I mean, putting in a camera here or there or something like that to where we can increase the tickets? Um, or at least let people know. Cause I have a rule at my house, if my sons get a ticket because they have heavy feet, they have to buy their mom that amount in shoes. And, uh, my son started going a little faster in Schroyer the other day and I said, dude, it's double the fine. Do you know how much shoes I'm gonna get if you get a ticket? So he went over to Delane and said, it's cheaper. So, you know, uh, maybe we do need to, uh, double that and then I can let my son know, mama gets more shoes. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, Alex, would you like to talk about tickets?
I did, uh, in anticipation of possibly someone wanting to know just about the specific Schroyer Road Project, I'd just say two things about it real quick. One is, um, I don't think that a study of the traffic on Delane and Hathaway and Acorn at this very moment would be extremely useful going forward. That, those traffic patterns come the end of October when Schroyer's open back up are gonna, they're gonna change. They're gonna maybe go back to what they were before. Maybe people alter their driving. I think we want to wait to see what that looks like before we, you know, take account today, tomorrow or next week and see what that looks like. Uh, so I would, I would recommend that you wait until that's been open for a little bit and people start a driving pattern, uh, before you do a study and then you have probably a pretty accurate snapshot of what that looks like, uh, moving forward. Just in the period between July eleventh, when, uh, pretty much the, the project started, uh, to the twenty-eighth, uh, late last week, uh, just on Schroyer Road itself, uh, our officers made five hundred and ten traffic stops for speed alone. And, uh, out of that, they issued a hundred and sixty-two citations. They also made an additional sixty-two stops, uh, for, for a different, for other violations. So that could have been someone who has suspended a stop sign violation, uh, other, any of the basic other violations. Out of that, they wrote fifty-five citations for those stops. And additionally, we arrested five people. Uh, there could have been warrants, there could have been some other reason, but there's five arrests off of those stops. So just in that, you know, July to September time period, we made five hundred and seventy-two stops there. And if you go off of the Schroyer Road and you go down into the, um, immediately adjacent area, so that would be Paterno East and Schaefer Delane, uh, they've made an additional fifty-seven stops uh, with thirty-two citations and two arrests. So, uh, when you think that we write somewhere between twenty-eight hundred and three thousand tickets in an entire year, we're talking almost two hundred and fifty citations. So about eight to nine percent of everything that we've done over a year period on average. over a year period, on average, is in this period, and it's in about a three-month period. Um, you know, and that's, that's not to say that there are other places in the city that were also schools owned or writing tickets there. So, um, this, there was a significant increase in our enforcement efforts, and I think that statistically, that's, that's borne out by the number that, uh, of citations and stops that have been produced, uh, in that area. This is obviously statistically, um, you know, for, for that area, it's, this is a significant increase.
Okay. As it relates to, I know someone commented about, uh, you know, the fines being double on Schroyer Road. Um, it's my understanding that the, the state law sets those rules. We can't do that by local ordinance. We can't, we can't say fines are double on Delane, but we can say fines are double in a construction zone.
It has to be a designated construction zone, I believe.
I'm sorry, the double fine provision is because it's been designated as a construction zone. Just by state law, the, the standard fine for a speeding violation is variable between zero and a hundred and fifty dollars, and the judge has a fair amount of discretion in deciding what amount to impose and then required by law to take a lot of things into consideration, the person's driving record, their ability to pay, a number of other things.
Yeah, so, so it's one thing to cite the people, we still have to make sure that the, the judge is going to enforce the fines.
That's the discretion of the judge, I can't speak to that.
Well, I understand, I understand that, but, uh, many of you know the judge, so make sure she's aware of your concerns. Um, but even though we have signs that say fines double in Schroyer because it's a construction zone, if they're not currently working there, you're not allowed to enforce a double fine, was my understanding.
Uh, if, uh, two prongs to that, either, either workers actually present or normal working hours.
All right. So, on Sunday, if there's no workers there and you're speeding on Schroyer, we can still fine you for speeding, we just can't do a double fine.
Right, the reduced speed limit still applies, but not the double fine part.
All right. This is almost like the deer problem. I know way more about speeding tickets than I wanted to know before, but, uh, having not had, having not had a speeding ticket since nineteen eighty-eight, so I'm happy to let you know that, so.
Any other questions I can?
Uh, yeah, anything else for, uh?
All right, thank you.
Any other folks want to?
Who else wants to speak? Could come back up so the people at home can hear you.
I didn't, I didn't jot down the numbers, but, you know, every time I get pulled over, I get a ticket. Maybe I have bad luck, I don't know what it is.
I am shocked at that statement.
I know, I just, I just had a really big one. It's always state troopers getting me, always late to get the kids from somewhere. I know, I don't even try. I'm like-
And that's because people think that Oakwood cops give a lot of tickets, see, that's that bad stereotype.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, if we pulled over, how many did you say, sorry, five hundred and seventy-two people?
Five hundred and seventy-two stops, and out of that, there were, I'm just in Schroyer and Schroyer itself, two hundred, like, two hundred and seventeen of those total citations.
I mean, I think we should, I think four hundred and seventy-two should be resulting in citations. I, I, I mean, with all due respect, just based on my luck.
Well, based on your luck, okay, thank you.
Based on my luck, it'd be five hundred.
Who else? Come, please come up and state your name for the record.
Uh, my name's Ally Jeffries of six forty-eight Woods Road, and-
Come a little closer to the mic.
This sort of goes back to like the basics, but I don't think that, like, any sort of stop signs or anything, or even more cops like patrolling Oakwood, like, they ticket people all the time, they stop people all the time, but I don't think there's really anything you can do to stop people from speeding because you can't control what goes, like, other people's decisions, especially while they're driving. It's like, like, I don't, I don't live near those streets, but I don't, I don't think there's really any way to, like, control what they're complaining about, because-
And you have or have not, you have or have not had a speeding ticket?
I'm sixteen, but I don't have my license, so I'm-
Okay, all right, well, don't speed in Oakwood. All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I propose, of course, everybody.
There you go, all right. Please come to-
Then we'll need a manure ordinance, so.
Um, this is my first meeting, so I just wanted to understand the path forward. Uh, if someone could summarize, everyone has voiced their concerns, now what? What happens next?
What we will do is the council will, will meet and talk about this with our city manager and public safety director, Alex here. Uh, Norv's on vacation this week, so Jay is here in his stead, uh, taking notes, and we will, uh, come up with a plan of action for these different little hotspots.
Okay, so how do we learn the results? Do we need to come back to the next meeting? Do we?
Who's the petition person? It was you, Sarah, right?
Serena, Serena.
Serena, I'm sorry.
Hi, it is, I know it's so late, a little bit, but I, I wanted to just clarify something, just that, so you guys understand, and I'm going to be drafting an email just to kind of reiterate and to thank you again for your time and to tell you a couple of things that I've proposed and the conversations I've had. Um, so for me, this all started with a petition just friendly, so you guys could know how many members of my direct neighborhood, uh, Hatcher Hills is what is, it is called, that agree with the stop sign on Kramer Road and, um, Haver. And so, of course, I get on Facebook and I see a isolated, completely different than from my personal experience, something I did not start, a thread with ninety comments on the mom's page. The speeding is terrible, you know, a lot of complaints, a lot of bickering, a lot of things that are not as productive. Um, and so I made the comment, "If you are concerned," uh, there's a city council meeting. I'm sorry that I made that comment, but there's a city council meeting-
We normally like to stay here till two in the morning.
Well, good, we're trying to keep you up late.
Hey, if you don't come, then we don't know what you're thinking.
Well, there, there you go.
We're not going to read negative comments on Facebook.
Thank you for not. Um, and so, then I said, "And you can voice your concerns, keep it short and sweet, bring it to, uh, the city of Oakwood." Then I started a second petition just regarding speeding in Oakwood, just if you guys needed numbers to see how many people, I'm sure you know how many people support, um, the issue. So, I wanted to clarify that really quickly for you, but there kind of are two separate issues at hand, and I know there's been a lot of talk, so I really appreciate you guys looking at them as those separate issues.
Well, one of, one of the items that we have is a standing agenda item is status reports, so I think we will report back, maybe not at our next meeting, but maybe into December, you know, timeframe.
Totally fine.
So, we can just, you know, have enough time to study the issue and come up with a thoughtful response.
No, that sounds wonderful, and thank you so much.
And I, I think that's exactly right, that, you know, uh, we're taking all this information in, and we do need a little time to look over this. Uh, speeding, as you know, is, is an issue that has been around for as long as we've had cars, basically, and it's important to, at least I want to try to, to make clear to everybody is, this isn't something that necessarily is, is just out of the blue to us. Um, the, our public safety officers do a really good job of, of tracking stats and trying to figure out where the trouble areas are in, in our community. That directly relates to how they then allocate officers and where officers go and, and, you know, what times they're doing those type of things. Uh, the Schroyer Road project is a, it's an anomaly. I mean, it's, it's basically, we're doing something here, so we have to then do something that we normally wouldn't have. Um, but if we do have hotspots, areas, you know, like Kramer or, uh, Delane or whatever, these are things that we want to hear from you, and then we want to figure out exactly what the best solution is. I mean, it might seem simple, "Hey, throw a stop sign on, you know, we're all done." That might not necessarily be the, the right thing to do, because then people either speed up, sometimes they then use alternate routes, which then increases traffic on roads that normally don't have that, and then you run into all kinds of new things. So, I do want everybody to know that, you know, we're taking all this information in, we'll, we'll study it, we'll see what our options are, and then we'll get back to you with some sort of, uh, solution. Now, it might not be the solution that you want, but hopefully, it's going to be a solution that at least addresses the problem, so.
All right. Who else would like to address council? You guys didn't sign up for this deal, did you? You thought it was going to be short and sweet to get that high school credit, didn't you?
Extra credit.
All right. Well, that concludes, concludes the visitors' portion of our meeting tonight. Uh, we will now move to legislation, and we do have an ordinance, how timely, an ordinance to clarify the process for implementing temporary traffic control devices. Mr. Stevens?
Which is totally coincidental to our topic at home. This is an ordinance to amend existing section three oh five point oh four effective date of regulations of the Oakwood Traffic Code to clarify the process for implementing temporary traffic control measures. This is the second reading of an ordinance introduced at our September meeting. Under section three oh five point oh three and point oh four of the traffic code, the city manager has authority to adopt traffic regulations throughout the city. This authority encompasses a wide range of traffic decisions, including the placement of stop signs, time-limited parking zones, road closures, and other things. The city's historical practice of adopting these regulations generally involves publishing them in a book of traffic regulations and posting signs as appropriate. However, we have only published those regulations that are intended to be permanent. Temporary regulations, such as the closure of a street for a block party or prohibiting left turns in the area of an ongoing construction project, are appropriately signed but are not recorded in the traffic regulations book. While this has been the city's practice, it is not expressly stated as such in section three oh five point oh four. The city has not experienced any legal difficulties due to the current wording, but the city attorney has recommended that council adjust the language to clarify that temporary regulations need not be recorded in the traffic regulations book. This is a second reading of this ordinance, so I move that council adopt it this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion or comments for Mr. Stevens? Hearing none, Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. We have no staff report tonight, uh, but we do have a city manager's report. Our acting city manager, oh, I guess you're not really acting city manager, but our assistant city manager, uh, sitting in for our manager who's on vacation, has that report. Welcome, Jay.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, members of council, it would not be a, a council meeting without a Schroyer Road update, so, um, I'll do that fairly quickly.
We are headed for the home stretch, as Alex mentioned, we've been at this now since mid-July or thereabouts. Things have gone relatively smoothly, all things considered. We've got an excellent contractor working on the project. Uh, beginning Wednesday and for approximately a week, Schroyer Road will be closed from Dorothy Lane down to Gainesboro Road there in, uh, Dayton. And the purpose of the closure is to begin the milling and paving, uh, part of the, uh, the process. Hopefully, weather permitting, that will be completed in about a week. Uh, the side streets accessing Schroyer will be closed during that time. However, Schroyer Road residents, uh, we will get you in and out of your, uh, your properties during, uh, during the closure, so that should not be a, a problem. Once the paving process is completed, the, uh, the pavement will be, uh, will be striped. The, uh, safety flashers will be installed on the two new crosswalks along the street, and also the, uh, the various signs throughout the Schroyer corridor will also be put in place. All of that work should be completed by, hopefully, before the end of the month. We received a notification today from ODOT that we received approval to, uh, add on to the existing contract, the, uh, replacement of irrigation systems and trees in the new medians. So, that means that, uh, that's part of a federal grant, meaning that, uh, the federal government will pick up sixty percent of those costs with the city picking up remaining forty percent. Hopefully, we will be able to get the trees installed and get the irrigation system put in, or in the, uh, so, uh, that's very good news as well. So, again, things are moving along quite nicely. If other nature continues to cooperate, hopefully, by the middle part of next week, we will have done, be done the milling and the paving portion of the project. Last Saturday, we had our annual community shred event and prescription drop-off at the, uh, the Fell Public Works Center. Cars started lining up at, uh, seven forty-five AM, and by the time eleven o'clock rolled, rolled around, we had over two hundred cars come through, either dropping off prescription drugs and or, uh, dropping off items for shredding purposes. Typically, we fill up one shredded truck, but on Saturday, we filled up two shredded trucks.
Wow, wow.
So, um, that was a record for as long as I've been around, as long as we've been doing that. We were busy the entire time, so I think a lot of people are concerned with the, uh, identity theft, and, uh, we seem to have more and more people participating in the, uh, the shredded project. I'd also like to say that, uh, that many residents who stopped in expressed their thank and appreciation to the city council for, uh, offering this free service to the community. A number of residents suggested that perhaps it's time to maybe do it twice a year rather than just once a year, so that's something that we'll certainly take a look at in the future. Saturday was also the last day for, uh, this year's Oakwood Farmer's Market. They had another record-breaking year. I'd like to thank all the volunteers, the, uh, the organizers, and also the, the market manager. It just seems to get, uh, bigger and better every year, so it's a real asset to the community, and, uh, I think they're looking forward to, uh, two thousand and eighteen already. And, uh, my final comments relate to the, uh, the new Pocket Park at the corner of, uh, Skank and Oakwood Avenue. It's going to be named Cook Park in honor of, uh, a former, uh, Skank Avenue resident and former mayor Jimmy Cook. We, uh, got some work done last week in, in getting the, uh, the site prepped. Later this week, they will be putting in the equipment, followed next week with safety surface. We've got a, a picket fence going in and around the park. Um, we'll be doing some tree trimming, taking out some, uh, some dead wood, uh, all in anticipation of having a dedication ceremony at the end of October on Saturday, the twenty-eighth, at, uh, two PM. So, again, over the next few weeks, we'll be finishing up, uh, all the other improvements, so we're looking forward to, uh, opening that up to, uh, to that particular neighborhood.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Jay? All right, well, then it's now time for, uh, council comments. Council member Epley?
Thank you, Mayor, I have no comments tonight.
You want to tell us what happened to your finger?
It's an old football injury.
Ah, all right.
It doesn't look old.
Please, please state that for the record, so we got a comment out of, uh, council member Epley. Okay, great. Uh, council member Hilton?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, I just wanted to remind people about the Fall Festival. It's an annual, uh, event at the Community Center or Shafer Park. Um, it's on Sunday, October fifteenth in the afternoon, and then preceding that and sort of during that, um, is the celebration of Scarecrow Row. I assume you're judging?
I am. I accepted the judgeship with, uh, the former art teacher from Oakwood to judge the scarecrows. It's one of the highlights of being mayor of your fine community.
Um, but yes, I, I think the kids or the organizations start to set up at nine o'clock AM on, on Sunday morning, and, uh, and it's really neat because those stay up throughout the sort of Halloween season, so.
Great. Council member Stevens?
Uh, just one announcement, uh, talk about an event coming up I'm very excited about. Uh, with the help of the Oakwood Rotary Club, uh, we're going to establish a, uh, Veterans Corner at Lane Stadium. Uh, and so on Saturday, October twenty-first, uh, at eleven AM, we're going to have a dedication ceremony. We're putting up two larger flagpoles than the existing flagpole that's there now. So, we'll have three total flagpoles, uh, you know, American flag, state flag, and combination city of Oakwood, Oakwood Rotary Flag kind of rotating, uh, and we're very excited. I've got some, uh, uh, you know, I'm kind of helping to head this event up. Rotary Club came through with the funding for the flagpoles, so we're giving all the credit to the Rotary Club, of course. Uh, I've got, uh, the high school choir coming in to sing the national anthem. I've got, Boy Scouts are going to, uh, help me with the ceremony, so it's going to be a real nice event. Real short ceremony, won't be very long, but we're going to try to get as many veterans we can to, uh, attend this event. Um, it's just a place we can honor our veterans who have always, uh, who've lived in Oakwood and have served our country.
Great, that's a great idea. Vice Mayor Byington?
Uh, yes, I, I just wanted to start off by thanking everybody for coming out this evening and talking to us. As Rob mentioned, you know, a lot of us follow the city website and, and the Facebook and all the other things, and, um, we take all that with a grain of salt, um, particularly since a lot of the folks who are commenting on those don't even live in the city of Oakwood. Um, so when, you know, they talk about Schroyer Road, it's basically, it just slows them down from speeding from Dayton to wherever they're going, Kettering or Centerville. So, take that with a grain of salt, but when folks take the time out of their busy schedule, we know that you're all busy, uh, to come here and talk to us, we, we appreciate that genuinely. Uh, I, and I think the young lady mentioned something about, you know, wasn't sure how the process worked. I would encourage you, you know, we always want folks to come here and, and speak to, to council, but if there's any-
speak to, to council. But if there's any issues that are important to you and you feel like you maybe want to talk to them, to us in a, a little bit more informal setting, all of our, our emails and, and phone numbers are on the website, the city website. You're more than welcome to contact any of us. Generally, we're pretty good about returning phone calls and, or emails and those type of things, as well as all the city staff is, is, that's what they're paid to do. So, feel free to come and talk to them, get your concerns addressed. And along with that, our next meeting is, what, November 6th?
November 6th.
November 7th is an election day. I always make an announcement on that day before, but I'm going to make it in a month in advance. There's different issues that are on the ballot. Oakwood doesn't really have a lot going on, but there's state issues that are very important. You know, we heard about Sinclair. There's other things in terms of prescription drugs. I encourage you to take a little time and, and read about what both sides of the issues are. You're going to see a lot of television commercials. And unfortunately, it's usually the, the person who has the most money puts out the most commercials. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's the, the best decision to make. So, take a little time, find out what the issues are all about, and make sure to vote on November 7th.
Well, no, there is a big election on November 7th.
There is a very big election in Oakwood. We, the two councilmembers up for election.
Well, you're unopposed. So, that's not a big election.
Well, I hope I still win then.
That's right.
Very good. You guys are done?
Yes.
All right. All right.
Yes.
Under, under Governor John Kasich's administration, the state broke its 75-year covenant with local governments by taking for itself sales tax revenue previously reserved for cities, villages, townships, counties, and school districts. His administration also eliminated the Ohio estate tax, 80% of which benefited local governments. They are responsible for the large amount of local income and property tax increases over the last six years. And in fact, his administration encouraged the same. Governor Kasich also expanded Medicaid under Obamacare in 2013. At the time, the General Assembly predicted costs would exceed his estimates. And of course, they did. The General Assembly's current budget provides some common sense cost controls, which the governor vetoed. If the General Assembly does not override his veto, and to date, that has not occurred, our next governor will have to decide on whether we want the state to provide assistance to poor children and this disabled, or to provide free health care to able bodied adults above the poverty level. Yesterday, Governor Kasich stated on CNN, "If the Republican Party can't be fixed, I'm not going to be able to support the party. But have I given up? No. I believe our governor should spend his final two years in elected office, working for everyone in Ohio, fixing Ohio's structural deficit, and spend less time on national media." With that, our next meeting will be November 6th, the day before Election Day. Thank you all for coming. This was a great meeting. And I hope to see you next month, especially you guys.
Extra credit.
I'll make sure you get extra credit. Okay? Adjourn.